Our next one is Skills for Small Businesses. This really is intended for small businesses, less than a hundred employees, but it's also intended for new employees as well. And pretty much the same type of systems with new training and things of that nature. And then our Skills Development Fund. This one is a little bit more technical. I would say this is kind of um an example. We've helped out Summit Plastic Molding out here. Um, we've identified that they actually have a hard time with finding tool and die makers. So it's our goal to try to help them, right? To create either some kind of customized training where they can help um upgrade or upskill their staff to become tool and die makers. So they're not having to um search high and low for these type of talents. And so that's an example there. Um fidelity bonding, right? Summit Plastic Molding is very um famous or is very gracious enough to invest into what we call the justice population. They have a partnership with the Transition Center. And a lot of times when businesses take that investment, um sometimes unfortunately they can lose um property damage and stolen. So this fidelity bonding is an insurance to help protect into um the business when they do hire individuals that either have a justice background or aren't receiving public assistance recipients, things of that nature too. And then of course, our big key, right, is apprenticeships. We're really big. What we've identified now is that if a business has an apprenticeship, which means that they have a program in place where individuals are getting trained on and they're also gaining work experience, the likelihood of that individual staying with their company is very high. And so we're really big on trying to find apprenticeships. Of course, we know trades is your common one, but now we're even finding IT or different kind of industries that aren't your normal type of apprenticeships. I think that's about it. I got Q and A definitely open to any questions at this time.
If a youngster joins your program, do they incur debt?
Do they incur debt? I'm sorry about that.
To be part of your program?
Oh, no, no, not at all, sir. Um, this is a complete, uh, how can you say? No obligations on both ends, right? The individual does not incur debt. Um, they do have to meet requirements as far as like complying with what we tell them and also with the businesses. At no point are they ever held accountable to keeping this individual.
Now, you say they receive training. Can they get an actual certification?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Do you have examples of success stories?
Yes, for sure. Um, we work with Pima, right? Dental assistance, different things of that nature. They are definitely getting their um, they're on their own. And depending on the funds and what we have available, of course, right? There is assistance where workforce does help out with making sure they can complete and get their certifications and that. So I know there is a lot more, not just the, I'm a subject matter expert in the medical field. So I understand more like the dental assistance, your medical assistance.
And what leads me to these questions is, uh, you know, a lot of college students who go into college, they don't finish college and they have a massive amount of debt.
Yes, sir.
That they're just overwhelmed?
Yes, sir. No, and the great thing is if you do know of anybody, right? We always talk to businesses about what we call reverse referrals. So um, I find it a little bit more successful when an employer says, hey, you know what? I found this individual. Can you see if they can get into your program? Now, that's an important thing, right? Because unfortunately, not everyone can qualify for these type of services. But we do do our best to try to assess their situation to see what's going on and see if we can make them eligible into our program. Yes, sir.
Just similar to the summer youth program back from the nineties. I did have a particular individual. He started off with me in the in planning and inspection when I was with the city of Socorro and I taught him the auto cat. And he uh, he, he went out to study civil engineering. Now he's a professional engineer with TexDOT Austin.
Nice, nice.
And I still have contact with him.
That's good. I promise I'm not lying when I say this. I'm actually creating an on-the-job training for an auto cat right now, actually. And so um, this employer is from New Mexico, but they actually have a worksite here in El Paso too. And so we're able to help them out. We gotta make sure, of course, um federal employer identification, all these little requirements. But essentially, yes, it is from what I hear, the same thing. Where it's our main purpose is to help them gain work experience. And we understand the cost of the training and all that that happens with businesses. That's why it's hard to take that investment. So what we do is try to help compensate the best we can in that regard.
He was my first civil engineer and then my second one just graduated three years ago. And I actually worked for him for four years at the Sorenneville District.
All right. Well, I can't wait to say the same success stories for here, right? For sure. Any other ones?
So what do they need to do? They just need to go into your building over here?
Yeah, great question, right? Um, so this presentation was just mainly about businesses. Um, I can always come back and do one for job seekers because that's the one great thing about us, right? Now we're realizing that not just one person can do one thing. We gotta kind of be generalists. And so Tuesdays, Thursdays, you can definitely find me out here. And we um, you can send a job seeker and we'll assess them and help them connect them to the right people and get them eligible as far as like asking them the questions that we need to assess their needs, things of that nature. But yes, you're here. And then, of course, um, we have our North Loop and Dyer location as well too.
But, but here in Orange, it's Tuesdays, Thursdays from?
Eight to five. Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions?
Is there a targeted population that you are for this program? I mean, are there things that will make you ineligible? Or are there special things that make you eligible to be in any one of your programs?
Yes, ma'am. No, that's a very great question. Thank you. So of course, um, our population, the type that we serve are those that are under service, right? That are really needing assistance when it comes to military, foster youth, uh migrant seasonal farm workers, youth, uh youth with different abilities. And so for this summer youth, we definitely are targeting um out-of-school youth and in-school youth, but also individ- uh, youth with different abilities. I think that's been the biggest stigma and bias that individuals and employers have, right? Um, sometimes we go to the worst-case scenario and they don't really think that with the demand of work that we got, I don't know if I can really give them an opportunity, right? But a lot of the research and the, the facts is that these individuals have great work ethic. They show up, they want in to work, and they also have job coaches. So we try to help out with making sure that it can be a smooth process. But for the summer youth, for sure, it's really more for your youth in school and out. And then also summer earn and learn. When you hear that, it's uh youth with different abilities. And then you'll hear us brand a lot, the Next Force. And Next Force is big because that's who we're investing, right? In the youth of um this generation.
Any other questions?
I guess great. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you, Council. Michelle Garcia, Prime Director. So we are asking the Council to approve the summer uh youth internship program and authorize the mayor to sign the documents so that the city can participate in that program.
What's your vote?
I have a motion in the second. Two is for the Council.
You want?
Sorry.
Quiros?
Hi.
Cortez? And Randy? Uh, Lulukia? Hi, Maria?
Hi.
Mendosa?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am, sir. Appreciate your honesty.
Item number eight. This is a discussion action item. This is on the acceptance of findings on the town of Horizon City Audit prepared by SEG PC for fiscal year 2023. Mayor, I know that Mr. Kim stepped out, but I don't believe the auditor is here. So we're asking if we can move this item to the later in the agenda. They can.
Yeah, that's right.
Item number eight. This is on the, I think, on the capital improvement.
Good evening, Council. Terry Casada, Capital Improvement Program Manager. Uh, this is the annual report that we bring to Council as per the charter requirement. Uh, we need to bring your report to you three months prior to the final date of submission of the annual budget. And so it works out that May is when we have traditionally brought you this report. So there aren't a whole lot of pictures in this report. It's more uh numbers. And you'll see that our starting point is the capital improvement program that Council adopted as part of the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget. We are not proposing any major changes. We're working on the execution of the projects that Council adopted then, uh including the projects that are funded through the fiscal year 2023 certificates of obligation. So I'm not going to go through the entire table. You have that at your disposal. And I'm happy to answer questions if you have specific questions about them or about the funding. But as I said, we're not looking at any major changes at this point. And these are the capital fund projects by category. You'll notice that the bulk of them continue to be street infrastructure projects. That's sixty-seven percent of the total um projects that we have. And um then you have the administrative buildings and public safety buildings, of course, because we're looking at municipal facilities phase one and phase two as part of those projects. I did want to include some highlights for the capital improvement program. Uh, we've opened proposals for the municipal facilities phase one and uh staff is currently in the evaluation process. We are in the cone of silence, so that is all that we can tell you. We're in the evaluation process. But we are expecting to have a contract award for that uh this summer. Oxbow, Pauline, and Bro Street and Drainage Improvements. We had a walkthrough yesterday. So we expect that we will do the substantial completion for that project and final completion later this summer. Uh, South Darrington Safety Lighting, that's a TexDOT-funded project. That's also underway. And we expect that that will be completed this summer as well. Uh, the North Darrington Reconstruction Rite of Way. There are a couple of easements that we are finalizing and those are in the vicinity of Walmart, one with Walmart and one with Murphy Oil Company. Um, as you know, we have acquired all of the rite of way necessary for the pond. Uh, that's at the northern end of the vacant area across the street. Uh, on the reconstruction project itself, we're still working with utilities uh to make sure that we have encroachment agreements and reimbursement agreements. And uh, we expect to begin coordination with the Camino Real Regional Mobility Authority to uh enter into a loan agreement with the State Infrastructure Bank, which is a division of the Texas Department of Transportation for the funding gap. Council may recall that we have about seventeen and a half million dollars for the construction project through the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Those are federal funds that are then matched to the tune of about ten percent by the city. But the bid, the low bid came in at about twenty-one and a half million. So we have a four-million-dollar gap. Plus, we need to make sure that we cover contingency because any cost overruns are the city's responsibility. So we're looking at at a CIB loan for that. The Camino Real Regional Mobility Authority has an established relationship with the CIB loan. Um, I was heartened to see that one of the representatives from the CIB loan was here at the Transportation Policy Board meeting in April. And he greeted the executive director of the Camino Real Regional Mobility Authority as an old friend. So uh, that's something that is certainly worth our while, certainly. Um, what we are proposing to do is to amend the agreement, uh the three-party agreement that the city currently has with the county and the Camino Real Regional Mobility Authority uh for the construction of East Lake Phase Two. Uh, that's East Lake, the, the new part of East Lake that is now more over that much of a, a new part, right? Um, that zone has been performing very well. We run some projected values for the next twenty years through the financial um advisor for the town. And we believe that that zone can fund both the existing debt to the Camino Real Regional Mobility Authority and a new loan. So you will see us working on that uh here as, as the summer begins. Uh, but the good news is that we now have a plan for funding that gap. Uh, Rodman shared use path. This is a small project, uh but it's taken us a long time to get everything through the Texas Department of Transportation. Uh, we expect the design will start this summer. Uh, we're still working with HUD. Uh, they have been a bit more stringent than we had anticipated. And so we're waiting for their approval so we can start the design on Dilly Delake and Transit Plaza. And on the 2023, 2024 Street Maintenance Program, uh we have opened bids for that. We're under the uh evaluating those bids. Again, we expect to bring a construction contract to Council this summer so that we can begin that construction project. And subject to your questions, Council, that's our report.
I don't want to hold this in too long. It's a CIB loan.
A CIB loan is a state infrastructure bank loan. It has, it's funded through the Texas Department of Transportation. Um, the benefit of having a loan through the CIB uh as opposed to issuing certificates of obligation or bonds is that the CIB loan tends to be much more competitive when it comes to interest rates from municipalities. They've been described as a patient lender. So they understand when municipalities use transportation reimbursement zones. Um, and they understand that it takes some ramping up before the zone can start producing. Uh, so that's, that's one of the reasons that that was our, our first option to fund the gap. So we're basically borrowing from the right hand of TexDOT and paying the left hand of TexDOT.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello? Motion.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for the court. Who's voting?
Luna? Quiros?
Hi.
Cortez? And Lulukia? Hi, Maria?
Hi.
Mendosa?
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, Council. Thank you.
This is hard, but it's a long process for every.
Next item is item number ten. This is discussion action. This is on an update on the ARPA program.
Council, it's time for our quarterly update on ARPA. You may recall that staff committed to bringing you quarterly reports as we um are programming and spending the ARPA funds. So this is a worksheet that you've seen. It identifies the projects that Council has approved and that we're working to, to complete. I won't go through the whole list, but if, again, if Council has any questions, I'm happy to address those questions. Um, couple of the milestones, we tried to remember when we have to report. Uh, in December of this year, we need to report the obligated funds. And obligation means that those are amounts that are under contract. Uh, so we can't just say, yep, we're going to spend them, right? They want us to actually have contracts where the city is committed to a specific service or, or product. And then in April of 2025, we are required to submit an interim report of estimated uh costs. So we have those two milestones. One of the first projects that we had was a virtual meetings capability. The equipment has been ordered. Uh, it's scheduled for installation later this month. And then it's going to be tested. And once all the testing is complete, then we'll have virtual meeting capabilities. Uh, City Hall buildout is going a bit slower than we had anticipated. We had hoped to piggyback onto a buy board of some sort that would have architectural services already in place that complied with federal guidelines. But that has not been an option. So it looks like we will have to do a, a city procurement. And again, we will have to comply with all federal requirements uh to make that procurement. So going back to the mayor's comment about it's, it's never as easy. It always takes a little bit longer. Um, Council may recall, we used uh ARPA funds for the rite of way acquisition for North Darrington. So again, we're uh, we've spent those monies and uh we'll spend a little bit more on the utility relocation efforts. Uh, similarly with the drainage improvements, we could not identify existing agreements that complied with federal requirements. So we will have to develop uh those processes. Well, we will have to follow those processes and go out for, for design for carson drainage improvements. Um, and again, we'll see.
Sure, I'll see about that. So you need to get under contract with the city?
Yes, sir.
So we're kind of behind a while.
Yes, sir. Um, again, the city initiated rezoning in the transit-oriented development. Uh, we're exploring those options to try to reduce the administrative time, which is a time to develop the scope and, and put it out uh for statements of qualification. Uh, but we're evaluating that to see how, how we can bring that to fruition. Uh, the Transit Plaza siting is underway. Uh, we expect to have three options under review and available by the end of next month and the final site selection uh in August of 2024. This is the first step for the design of Dilly Delake and the Transit Plaza. We wanted to make sure that we had a site that works with all of the movements that we expect will, will happen for a, a transit site. And again, we're using ARPA funds for this part of that project. And just as, as an aside, we used the Camino Real Regional Mobility Authority to hire consultants for that siting. Uh, and so that, that saved us some of the administrative time. Um, air quality analysis, this is something that we had proposed to Council. Uh, we still need to coordinate with the local government corporation through the county. Um, because again, we have to coordinate the, the routes that we're proposing. So this is still one of the projects, but we do not have a whole lot of progress to report on that. And then the property acquisition for a couple of the projects. Um, once we have a better definition of where this plaza site needs to be, then we can determine whether or not the city needs to acquire property. Uh, same thing with, with City Hall. And then we can proceed with, with those uh efforts. Um, we have Dilly Construction under as a contingency project. Realistically, Council, we have not even begun design. So it doesn't look like we're going to use it for this uh simply because we have to have a contract underway by December of this year. And that does not look like it's going to happen. But it's still one of the approvals that we have from Council. And again, we continue to monitor. And if we need to make some, some changes, then we will certainly do that to make sure that we um utilize those funds. Excuse me.
Let's see.
Excuse me. Thank you. Um, so that we do not turn back any of our funds. So, subject to your questions, Council, that's the ARPA report.
I have, I have a question. Is uh, on the, in our packet was a, a table of the funds, funds of the budget and then the, the allocation variances and all of that. Under one column, you called cost, it's called cost in contracts to date. Is how much of that is really a contractual and how much of that is really actual expenses?
Most of those are actual expenses. What I did is I took the encumbrances and the costs and just made one column. Um, but we have most of the expenses uh already incurred for the largest project, which is the rite of way acquisition. But I can certainly split that out.
One thing split that so that uh, the idea between now, which I think, which I'm, I'm, which is my comment, I'm, I'm kind of leery that we're going to make this commitment by the end of the, of the year. Uh, so that we can see what contracts are in place, whether there's been any expenses on it or not.
Yes, ma'am.
Versus the actual expenses.
Sure. We can split that out.
Because, and then there's some of these uh categories that, you know, there's no way we're going to spend what is um or put, uh, or put in a contract between now and December, uh like mainly on the administrative side. Uh, should we be adjusting those for, for, for lower amounts and moving those monies to, to the bigger projects?
On, oh, on the administrative side? We're going to defer to, to, to Ms. Kaitan on that.
Yes, that's a good suggestion. And that's something I had thought about too because most of that is for PP. And uh, we allocated that money for that purpose, but in part, you don't need that anymore. So I realize.
That's something that we would have to bring to Council by November. And we can work on that and bring that sooner rather than later. We won't wait a quarter to bring that to Council.
And I'll just say it again. I, I don't see us getting all these contracts in place by December. And is there anything that we can do to, to spend this money, I guess? Uh, other, I mean, every, just all of these big projects require you to get a consultant or a, a, put out a request or, or something. And I just, I mean, it's, it's uh, we've got eight months, basically eight months to do that or seven and a half months to do that. And uh, we've already spent three and a half years. And we haven't even spent half a month. So I, I, I'm, I'm just afraid that we're going to have to mind of getting something back. And I just don't want to have to do that.
And, and we understand that that's Council's concern. The backup plan, and I believe that we've shared this with Council, is that if we find that we cannot make substantive expenditures, right? And, and it depends on how much we can get under contracting, right? It's, if we just get design and not construction for some of these projects, that still gives the, the city an opportunity to have projects on the shelf. And then we can decide what the next steps are for construction. But the backup plan is that whatever funds cannot be committed by the end of this year, we will apply those to the gap with uh TexDOT at, on North Darrington. Because that's an opportunity to match that. It reduces the debt that the city would then have to incur as part of the CIB loan. Uh, but again, we're trying to spread that money as much as we can, get as many benefits to the community as possible, uh given that we have another funding opportunity for North Darrington. But if we have to do that, then that's the plan so that we do not turn money back to the feds.
So what happens if we get the administration?
Well, this is committed, yes. This is committed.
I mean, will it transcend the new administration?
Well, it will because it's before the new administration would take office. I mean, we have to have, we have to demonstrate that it's committed. And at that point, the city would have, again, those contractual obligations that relied on these federal funds. So um, I mean, never say never, right? Because things can happen and, and there are recissions that, that, that the feds have done. They've done that with, with transportation dollars. But um, I think the goal is that if we follow the, the federal guidelines that we've been provided, then that's a commitment from the federal government, not just to Horizon, but to other communities, to spend those funds.
Are there any other questions? Any other comments? Is there any, you can accept? A motion?
A second.
Got a motion and a second?
Luna?
Hi.
Quiros?
Hi.
Cortez? Randy? Lulukia? Hi, Maria?
Hi.
Mendosa?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Doctor.
Item number eleven. This is a discussion action item. This is on the town, uh, that the town of Horizon City approved the submission of an application for the state crisis intervention grant program to the Office of the Governor of the State of Texas.
Good afternoon. Um, Casey Valdez with Horizon City PD. I'm the Lieutenant in Charge of um Criminal Investigations. And I'm here to talk to you guys about our proposal to um, to create a crisis intervention program, a response team via a grant from the state. So um typically, when we talk about mental health, the first thing that comes along with it is the stigma. It's always there, mental health and stigma. Um, when we talk about mental health as a community and as individuals, our, our response tends to be, no, thank you, like. Um, mental health is important, but for the most part, everybody just says, we're fine. We're fine. We don't need it. Um, here in Horizon City, um, what does mental health mean? So um, a lot of the times, the regular citizenry would think about mental health in terms of, um, you know, just the people in our community, the few of them who suffer from mental illness. Um, and most residents would think um, that problems such as those dogs or kids running around on ATVs, um, that's the prevalent problem in our city. Um, I prepared a little diagram here um showing how everything relates. Um, so we have, um, for example, teen runaways. Um, they run away from home and then we get into sex crimes and. And quite often, and more often than you would think, they bleed into each other. So teens run away, and then they end up being sexually assaulted. Of course, as part of that, there's domestic violence, which is also a problem in any community. But of course, the domestic violence can feed the runaways. Because when parents are having problems, their kids don't wanna stick around and be there for that. So that creates that, which also leads into gang activity. Because, you know, kids do look to be accepted somewhere, and so that leads into that. And of course, gang activity leads to property crimes. And overall, it all contributes to the possibility of a mass casualty risk. It is uncomfortable to talk about these things, because we all wanna think everyone in our community is a good person. Everybody in our community is doing just fine. And there is no risk of anybody coming in and creating violence. We don't wanna think about that. During last week's or during last year's police week, you know, how we do the proclamation? I shared a story with you guys about how we almost got blown up during the national layout event, and how we just barely skated by by the skin of our teeth. Because some man had put a propane or two propane tanks on a stove. And he had wanted to blow up the house. And the 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 force behind that was that he hallucinated his mother. And who told him to to take out a bunch of cops. And so when we were there, we were very close to probably blowing up. And then more than likely, it would have taken out the two or three houses adjoining it. So as a result, this this situation that we have often goes unseen. So we propose a solution or we propose a way to to start dealing with it. And so it's gonna be two teams. One peace officer and one mental health clinician per team. And the function is solely to follow up and connect with members of our community and get them to resources. There are resources throughout the community that people just don't know about a lot of the times. Such as there's resources that can help domestic violence victims find jobs, get training, have their housing paid for while they transition out of that abusive relationship. But it's not always out there for everybody to know about. We try to train our officers, but of course, as officers, you're handling this call. And then there's, you know, two calls pending, we saw them storm out right now. And so the goal is to establish the information infrastructure, which will allow for those resources to reach those who need them. A lot of the times, or currently, there is a lack of trust between people in the need of mental health resources to police officers. Because a lot of the times, they tend to think of us as violent, they tend to think of us as aggressive. And so some people might not even call, because they're not sure that we can handle their autistic son or daughter or family member. The payoff is a much more efficient handling of crisis incidents. Plus a reduction in demand, which of course will immediately impact the quality of police service, which we can provide our community in terms of addressing criminal activity, not just mental health and ramifications from mental health issues. So in two thousand and twenty-three alone, the HCP responded to two hundred and nineteen calls directly related to incidents of mental health crisis, which don't include eighty-one direct threats of suicide and a hundred and ten calls which a person was going through, just other type of mental crisis. These numbers do not account for the family violence, the sexual assaults, and all the property claims directly related to those type of incidents. And if we add all of those, the number climbs up to three thousand five hundred twenty-six calls. Our approach to addressing mental health needs to needs to evolve. And establishing this a mental health unit is not really just a recommendation, it's a necessity. And this image kind of represents just kind of sitting back and not doing anything about it, because it's not a matter of if it's gonna break and something's gonna happen, it's just a matter of when. So let's talk numbers, right? Okay, so I I I brought this in directly from from the application. The to the total amount of the project is four hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. This figure will pay for the first year of of a salary or or wages for the two clinical health, the two mental health clinicians and two CIT trained officers. It also pays for their vehicles, that's two vehicles. It pays for all the radio equipment and all the internal infrastructure here to set them up. And again, their primary duty will be to, let's say, our regular police officers go handle a domestic violence. And this team will follow up to make sure that that victim has the the resources that are required and that it's not just an ongoing issue. Because again, these calls add up, and they eat into what could be more proactive policing of criminal activity. So this is why we're wanting your approval to apply for this grant. And any questions?
Have we had this grant before, or this is the initial?
This is a brand new grant, this is the initial application, and this is for the first year.
Can you go back to the previous year? You're gonna have two clinicians, you need for full-time positions?
Um, they are full-time positions.
And then who would pay after that?
Yeah, so it's very good.
Yeah.
The subsequent years, we will continue to seek the funding from the state, which is the the goal. Other than that, the city to continue that program would have to pay the salaries as the vehicles and everything would already be taken care of, so.
I know right now, when you do have CIT callouts, we'll help take those out.
At this point in time, we are training or we're trying to provide training to each and every one of our police officers. In fact, we have three of them in the CIT Academy right now. It's a three-week program, it's a grueling mini-academy. And we've had, I believe, four previously go through it. So currently, we are using our own officers with that additional training. And so when we do have one that's on shift, it's perfect. And we connect with the Emergents Health Network. And that's who is gonna be providing those mental health clinicians.
Work.
Mm-hmm, to emergents.
So they wouldn't be employees that was any kind of contractual?
From what I understand is that they would be our employees, but they would be connected.
So our officers respond, let's say that somebody's violent. Our officer responds, and then they would be followed by the the clinician.
Right, so the clinician would be.
Maybe the guy gets a beat down from the cop.
I'm sorry?
Say you got takes a beat down from the cop, what what then, you know?
Right, so overall, our goal is never to get to a beat down, like that's the very last. That's the very last.
You have to exert force.
Sure.
Become their force.
I understand. But even on this, you know, I shared the story about the guy with the propane tanks. We were able to take that person into custody with minimal beat down, right? So.
Force.
Force, right, we used appropriate force. But there was no, there was no need for emergency medical treatment of this person. We were able to get in there, coax them out, and, you know, go into. Because at that point, the house, the the kitchen was on fire, so we were able to go in there, grab the propane tanks, take them out, and the fire department was able to go in there and and shut the actual fire down. But we, you know, as a, you know, the one thing I really love about this job is how you have to play jazz. And so once we found out that the stove had the propane tanks on, you know, on fire and stuff, so we rushed, so neighbors evacuated them, and as we evacuated them, we asked for a wrench so you could shut down the gas to the house. And then we were able to do this. And again, we could have just broken in the door and and gone, you know, beat down style. But, you know, there's always a creative way that we try to get to. Because at the end of the day, these these are just members of the community who need help.
So so I I I can say that we understand that there's a need out there.
Mm-hmm.
There there's a need in every community for, you know, for this, for people that that are suffering from mental health issues. Now, from the city's perspective, you know, we looking at this, we have to make sure that that, you know, these funds being that. How long has this grant been available? Is this the very first year this grant has been available, or?
I believe there have been grants like it before. This is the first time that we applied for it.
Oh, no, I understand, but is there a a history to run the grants itself? I think that's.
We've got a whole year. We had a agreement with Emergents, it was called something else, but. And they actually supplied a a response officer when we called. And we, it was actually relatively inexpensive. Remember those flying out of budget? Six, seven thousand dollars a year, and they would respond. So we do have a history with Emergents. And I was gonna ask that question about that same program.
Mm-hmm.
Hi, hi. I know the sheriff's office also responds when you guys call CIT. Why don't we have it within the sheriff's office? I've seen it on your morning reports. CIT gets called out.
We we get called out, but they vary, depending on their hours, they have a a certain schedule. So sometimes they're available, sometimes they're not.
Because I heard that we need to sign an agreement with them, so they can come down.
No, they 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 have jurisdiction in our town as well. And and actually, to answer the the question about the grants, that's what the sheriff's sheriff's office operates on is 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 grant funding for their CIT programs. And they have, what, like, ten or eight of the deputies now?
I would ask in the past, you remember, you remember to look at. You've got two or at least five salaries. The numbers don't, you have a certified police officer at a hundred and forty thousand, and then down below, you have two certified police officers at a hundred and forty thousand.
The the reason, the reason there's two is because this this comes from an internet form, so a little minus sign would hide the itemized number. So it's two certified police officers that are CIT trained for a total of one hundred and forty thousand dollars.
So we don't look at the first one up there?
No, I mean.
And you're getting two two CIT trained clinicians for a hundred, for sixty thousand dollars each?
Correct.
And a counselor at a hundred and forty thousand. So we've got three people coming in?
No, there's two, so there's two CIT trained clinicians, like times two CIT trained clinicians and times two officers.
So which the counselor?
What's counselor?
That's the, that's the title, right? So like, if you click the minus sign, that's the title overall of the two people. So when you, when.
But we're still paying for them, right?
Right, so but it's just the two, the two CIT trained clinicians and the two certified police officers.
So who does the counselor work for?
That's, that's who they are. So if you want a computer and you click this little minus sign, or you would see as a counselor. The, then it would be a plus sign, and then you would expand on that. And then so the the further information on on that title, on that same item, is that it's a it's a certified clinician, so. Um, there's no counselor, it's just the counselors.
Two 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 certified officers that were already already employed, and then two new employees that are commissioned. Is that correct, or is it two new officers?
Well, we would hope to get two new officers, as all their roles will be doing these follow-ups.
Okay, and this goes for a year?
This would go for the first year.
Would you actually hire outside of there, or would you promote somebody outside or assign somebody, like, hire at the bar?
More than likely, we would assign our our like, we would have, you know, interviews and assign our two best CIT trained officers. So they'd be there, and then we'd have two new officers to fill those spots.
And then, just if you don't get the the grant the second year, you will.
Well, then, we'd be on the hook just for the salaries, because everything else is already taken care of.
You will want to increase your budget by a hundred, by two hundred, some odd, plus any sort of, so any other inflation investment that would be made because of that. Right? So.
No, no, absolutely, that that that's always a big question, is sustainability for for any grant. You know, and obviously, in in this case, if the grant doesn't get renewed, it kind of still falls in line with what what our expectations are of our police department, is to continue to expanding it. So if it doesn't fall, then we're we're not gonna be paying for any clinicians of the city budget. All we have to do is just absorb those two police officer positions into our force. And like I said, again, it it falls in line with with the expectations that we want to expand our our police department. And we don't, we wanna provide, I mean, the the whole basis of this, we wanna provide that specialty aspect in order for us to provide that direct service and not have to depend on anybody, you know? We wanna be able to do it ourselves, self-sustainability. And I think that's something that we've we've always kind of taught our people, is that we need to train them, we need to equip them, and and they need to be ready to respond to whatever incident. Because in actuality, we are the the real first responders here. We get the call, you know, we're not gonna wait for any any other agency to come and help us.
You're gonna wait for a clinician. So if we can't get those, that clinician the following year, what happens to the program?
We'll we'll just have to work something out, may maybe perhaps with the sheriff's office. But at this point, we're looking to expand our department, you know?
How many OPs do you have in your department right now? Because we're having power lines fully the the, right? So how are we police staff?
We 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 have two vacancies right now, which are which are two two incidents that we that we talked about. So those are the only two that we have. Outside of those vacancies, we have others that we we cannot fill, because we're we're still paying leave benefits. And and the two, yeah, the two, and yes, and 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 we are, we already have those two ready for to come on board.
Do the salaries that you're showing here, those those include benefits as well?
Yes, ma'am.
We have these officers, we have two trained clinicians, which we're not in the clinic, so they must have a burden. First, does we stand for, are there our employees, functioning employees, who supervise it then?
So so we.
Professionally, or technically?
It would be through EHI, and we we do have a great relationship with EHI, by the way. And then that they're part of the reason why we're we're kind of applying for this. And so to answer your earlier question, we do have a good relationship. We already have, we have a what they call that core program, which is primarily just, they just give us a tablet. The officer responds to a critical incident. The the officer turned on the tablet, and a clinician comes on. So we already have the the foundation for a full CIT program.
Well, I think you can change the person.
Absolutely.
However, the, given I have an authorization to apply.
To apply, yes, sir.
I think that's, I think that's being made is, we meant to go help awareness, we should. I think it's, I think it's being made is, we meant to help awareness, we should.
Somebody calls in, hey, there's somebody acting out here. We're, the, the cops respond, uh, how does this? What did this clinician do?
So, so.
Well, how does that change the outcome of this encounter, for example?
Okay, so this is not so much, um, on the response side. So, this is more along the lines of, um, when we go to a call, when somebody's having an episode, you know, before they turn into a mass shooter, that's where we wanna intervene and have the person get follow-up treatment. So, that's what the clinicians are there for. They're not there to simply respond during the, during the crisis.
And that's an extreme, that's an extreme, right?
And that's, uh, almost happened, you know?
Yeah.
So, it, it's, it's happened. So, what we're trying to say here is that, or with this program, is we want the follow-up, you know? So, when people don't have their meds, these clinicians will be following up on that. When people don't get resources, these clinicians will be following up on that. So, that's their primary role. The, the, the response to the crisis, you know, of course, officers will respond to that. If they're on duty at that point, they will also respond to that. The, the clinician will stay behind until things are safe, then the clinician can probably build a better rapport um with somebody going through a crisis. But of course, that being only once it is safe for them to do so. Um, these people, um, are not armed, they're not peace officers. So, they, they are like firefighters, right? So, when we go to, like, a drive-by shooting, um, the firefighters hold off until the scene is clear. Once the scene is clear, the firefighters can come and assess any injuries or any damages, or, you know, things like that. The same thing with the ambulances. Once things are clear, they can come on board, and it would be the same thing with a clinician. The initial safety, um, protocol is not gonna change. We wanna make sure everything's safe. But once they're there, when they say that they have no medications, or they haven't had medications, or their medications are having ill effects, that's where this will make a difference at that point, because the the clinician will be able to work with them as a patient, as opposed to a tag him and bag him, which is kind of our current approach, right? Because we're not, we're not clinicians, so we just safety, transport to the hospital, that's it, until they have their next, until they have their next crisis. This program will intercept that, so hopefully, there is no next crisis. Or if there is the beginning of a crisis, they might actually just call the, the specific unit and say, hey, you know, I'm not feeling well, need help, and it won't get to a crisis. That, that's the point of this.
So, there's a follow-up for every, every call, yeah?
That's there, yeah.
So, that, that's, that's, that's the design of, of the program itself. And, and those are very good questions, by the way, um, because those are the same questions I had, right? I mean, what is gonna be the role of the clinician when we, when they're responding to a call? Um, but not yet, uh, you know, the lieutenant kind of, uh, uh, described it, they're kind of like in the, on the backend. Um, but they're also trained to be able to, uh, handle themselves in case of a critical situation. You know, for example, if somebody walks up to their vehicle, and, and they're, they're, the, the officer and the clinician have to be together, they know how to, how to react and what to do in, in cases of an emergency. That's all part of the training, and, and that's all part of how the, the CIT officers are trained as well.
Are there any other questions?
I think I have a motion.
Do we have a motion?
Okay.
A second, do we have a second? You hold the council, please.
Lula?
Hi.
Kiroz?
Hi.
Ortega?
Hi.
I'm Gutiérrez.
Hi, Padilla?
Hi.
Mendoza?
Hi.
Motion, Carrick?
Uh, the next. The next item is, uh, presentation, item number twelve, is on a proclamation declaring May twelfth through May eighteen, two thousand twenty-four, as Police Week.
Mayor City Council Marco Argas, Chief of Police. Uh, it gives me, gives me great pleasure to, once again, come before you, uh, to present this proclamation uh, on behalf of, of Horizon City regarding, uh, Horizon City Police Week. Uh, so, whereas the men and women serving as police officers answer calls from citizens for police, fire, emergency services, and whereas these professionals are first responders, are the first in providing critical assistance to Texans in times of great need, and use their specialized skills to, to, uh, calm presence and evaluate, uh, on these invaluable members of our community. Uh, the town of Horizon City police officers exhibit professionalism, compassion, empathy during these, uh, critical events. And whereas, to highlight the invaluable role of the police officers, the community annually designate, designates a week in May for the recognition and appreciation of our heroes. And whereas, all residents of the town of Horizon City are encouraged to extend their appreciation to our police officers whose diligent efforts ensure that help is on the way when it is most needed. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the City Council, the town of Horizon City. The week of May twelfth through May, May eighteen, two thousand twenty-four, be known as Horizon City Police Week.
Well, we. Well, I wanna say thank you to all of our police officers in our department here. Um, you know, it, it's, you all carry a burden, um, and you all are public servants of our committee, and you know, I've been here all my life, and I can say, you know, when, when, when this department started, you know, always looked up to the department, and now being here in this position that I'm at, and I know that council agrees with that, you just wanna say thank you all for, for everything you do. Thank you for coming out every day. Thank you for, for being a part of this community and, and deciding to make this your, your home for your career. So, again, thank you all so, so very, we really appreciate you.
Thank you, man.
And, and I know you guys are probably been sitting in your seats for a long time, if you don't mind stretching for a quick picture with us? We, we would appreciate that.
One, two, three?
Mayor City Council Marco Argas, Chief of Police, once again. If I can have off, uh, Sergeant Elie Sierra front center, please. So, uh, uh, again, it takes me great pleasure to be in front of you guys, once again, to, uh, on these, on these momentous occasions that where we're able to promote somebody from within our department. Um, so, Elie Sierra, the youngest of three siblings, born and raised in the Lower Valley area of El Paso, to Norma Estela and Alfredo Sierra, which, by the way, they are in, in your audience today. He grew up in the Lower Valley around the Isleta area, graduated from Isleta High School in two thousand and nine. Uh, his law enforcement, uh, began when he was a young kid and enjoyed the Border Patrol Explorer Program in two thousand and eight. Uh, that actually further awoke his spirits for serving the public. In July of, of two thousand and sixteen, he graduated from the El Paso Community College Law Enforcement Training Academy, and actually served in a leadership role while going through, through his class as Vice President. Uh, Elie Sierra was hired by the Horizon City Police Department in October of two thousand and eight at the tender age of twenty-seven. He's been involved in multiple roles within the agency since then. Um, he's, he was in the patrol division for approximately three and a half years, took part in the bike patrol division, and was certified as a field training officer during that time. Uh, he was also selected to, to serve on the Special Traffic Investigations Division in two thousand and one. And then, again, he, he took on the role of Community Relations Officer in April of two thousand and two, which, by the way, he, he's done a tremendous job in, in, in our community projects here, uh, within Horizon City. He, he's the one that um, you know, he, he, he was the one that led the organization for our National Night Out, Christmas Parade, Movies at the Park. During this, the, during his time in, in our administration division, he obtained the knowledge, guidance, and training to bring the community a better understanding of our police department and its community policing approach. He's created a strong bond with some of the officers today, which truly makes it feel like a family he's always wanted. He has five kids, is married to a very supporting and amazing wife for three years, and she is here, by the way, as well. He knows that without the support of his parents and spouse, he would not be here today. Although he did grow up in the Lower Valley, he's felt a sense of belonging here in Horizon City, and actually lives in, within our community. He looks forward to serving our community for people, for our community, or our people, as long as he is able to. Now, today, or post, since Saturday, promoted to Sergeant is Elie Sierra. If I can have beer now, come on?
Well, before you speak, I need to say something. So, I've had, I've had the opportunity to work with Elie Sierra for a couple of years now, and to see his excitement, to serve his community, to just the enjoyment he has for his career, for his, for his job. Um, Explorers program, Border, the Border Patrol's Explorers. You, you would've looked good in green, but you look better in blue. But I just wanna say thank you so much, you know, on behalf of the council and everybody here. Thank you so much for everything you do. Thank you guys for your support. Congratulations. Now, you can have a speech. Maybe.
Uh, more than I stand. I'll start over here, I don't want to be very close to my back, but, um, I think I've learned something from every officer here in, in this courtroom, and even the ones that aren't here today. And I, it's a privilege to actually be, be able to, to serve this community. Um, I, I really didn't think I'd be here today. And while I do have to say thank you to my family, they've always stood behind me, um, and anytime that I couldn't push further, I had the help of my coworkers, you know, to, to keep, uh, to keep pushing. I'll say this part in Spanish, you know.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Sergeant.
On to item number fourteen. Staff has requested admission of this item, but we don't have to agree with it.
Uh, motion is agreed. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second, believe, item fourteen? Hold, counsel? Hi.
Kiroz?
Hi.
Ortega?
Hi.
Valio?
Gutiérrez?
Hi.
Padilla?
Hi.
Mendoza?
Hi. Motion, Carrick?
We are now gonna take item number eight, um, at this point. Uh, this is the item that was tabled, and this is a session action that I, uh, um, we set some sort of findings of the, of the audit for here, on this evening. Please, for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Good evening, Council. Mayor, uh, Lady Gaetan Finance Director. This evening, we have, uh, Teo Cabrera and Abigail Tejés, who are gonna be presenting the financial statements and the audit report for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit.
Thank you, Lily. Thank you very much. Thanks for having us, members of council. Uh, my name is Teo Cabrera. I'm the, um, partner at S V and G, um, that was assigned to, uh, complete the audit for this year. And I also have Ms. Abigail Tejés, who is our audit supervisor. So, uh, we've been the team for the last few years. I've been working on the audit for several years as well. Very happy to see a lot of familiar faces. And I do realize that we were number eight on the agenda. I do apologize for that. Uh, that is my bad. You might see that I have May fifteenth on the screen. So, there was, there was a mix there, and I should've known, because I know that your meetings are usually on Tuesdays, and I apologize for that very deeply. I, I hope that I didn't waste a lot of your time by having to reschedule me to the end. Uh, luckily, we're still able to make it here today. Um, do you all have a, were you able to see a PDF copy of the audit? It should've been provided to you all. Okay, so today, we're gonna go over a presentation. I do have my laptop here in case there's any more particular questions. I mean, the, the actual audit report is, it, it's all about a hundred-page report, very technical. Uh, but i- if you have read it, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to address any of them. Uh, but today, we're gonna go over, uh, a PowerPoint slides, which summarizes a lot of the items in the audit. Um, the summary, the, the most important thing that everybody wants to know is whether the audit had a good result, yes or not, right? So, I will start by saying that, yes, the audit did have a good result. Uh, it is what we call a, a clean opinion, or an, or an unmodified opinion. Uh, so what that means is that we were able to obtain all the evidence that we needed to attest to the audit. And we also didn't have any disagreements with the city, uh, management, with, with Ms. Lily, with any of the accounting practices. And any adjustments that were recommended to us, they were in fact approved and agreed to by Lily. So, we are in full agreement with the. agreement with the numbers, and we don't have any limitations to our audit. We also didn't have any difficulties during the audit process. As a matter of fact, this audit process was smoother than last year. We did notice that some of the recommendations that we had provided, you know, try to have additional accounting staff to help Lily, that recommendation was in fact implemented. A lot of the items that we requested for the audit that were provided earlier to us, and we just had a much more smoother process this year, so there was improvement, and last year was pretty good, too. It's already a good bar, so we're just getting better every year. This is Lily's second year in charge of the audit, so I think it was a very good process. In addition to doing the normal audit, because of the ARPA funds that you all have, and then also because of the ongoing tech startup projects that you all have, there is a need for a compliance audit that we also completed in addition or in conjunction with our audit. You haven't had one of those since, I believe, two thousand and eighteen, it's been a while, so whenever there is a lot of grant money out there, just know that that's just an additional audit requirement, it's very likely that for two thousand and twenty-four, you're also going to need that, just because of all the ARPA funding that is out there, and that you all are required to at least obligate all those funds by December twenty-four, finish spending them by December twenty-six, so hopefully, most of them will be spent in the near future. So, we also didn't have any issues with the compliance, we had a really heavy focus on the ARPA grant, we also looked at the tech startup grants, the tech startup grants, we had audited many years in the past, we looked at them again this year because of the Derrington widening funds that are out there, those were fine, and the ARPA funds were fine without any compliance issues noted. So, we have a really brief summary of the finances here, the statement of net position. If you were to see a copy of the audit, that is page twenty on the audit, right? In case you have the PDF copy with you, you want to refer later on to that, but this is what we call a balance sheet, a balance sheet in the, you know, the commercial room, right, the normal room, so it shows the total assets, the liabilities, and the net position. Okay? So, what we're seeing for fiscal year twenty-three is a very sharp increase in total assets, very close to the hundred-million mark, right? And these are the total assets, it includes cash, investments, accounts receivable, and then also what accountants call fixed assets, fixed assets are going to be long-term assets, monies that you have invested in infrastructure and roads and things like that that are being depreciated over several years, that is, or half of your audits are in that manner, in the form of fixed assets, right? And we'll see in a little bit how much is in cash. Total liabilities on that same page are sixty-two million dollars. There was a new bond issuance, as you all know, in June two thousand and twenty-three, and that represents twenty-six million dollars out of those sixty-two million dollars, right? There's been some other bond issuances, this is, I believe, the city of Horizon's third bond issuance, right? There was one in two thousand and five, two thousand and eleven, I believe the other one was in two thousand and eighteen, and now this one, two thousand and twenty-three, which is the biggest one. Most of the two thousand and twenty-three remained unused as of the end of the year, obviously, because the bond issuance came really late in the fiscal year, and we're going to talk a little bit about that, too. The net position, that is simply, think about it like the city's equity, right? The city's, how much the city's worth, right? So, net position is thirty-seven million, and that is a six percent increase. So, why is the net position important? Whenever the net position increases from one year to another, it means that economically, you're in a better place, right? Your assets outgrew your liabilities, so even though we had that big bond issuance, we still managed to increase our assets by a bigger proportion, right? So, six percent increase basically means that we have a surplus for the year, for the government as a whole, so that is a pretty good thing, that's where we want to be. For the most part, whenever there's a surplus like this, it is being spent back on roads, and that's what we're going to see with those surpluses, that they're being spent back on roads, right? Or they're being held on investment accounts or cash reserves, that's typically the two things that happen. In the same page, and that's still on page thirty-twenty, that is one of the most important pages of the report, we can see the total cash on hand, without including investments, it's forty-four million dollars. Now, why is this number important? It is the highest that it's been, as far as I can remember. Most of that has to do with the timing and how we issue those big bonds and we're planning to spend them, but the important thing is that we need to be making sure that we have good investments, that we have these funds in the right types of bank accounts, right? And the city does have a diverse arrangement of bank accounts, some of them are money markets, others are checking accounts, there's also intergovernmental pools, so one of the recommendations that we provided to Lily is just making sure that those that are placed in investment accounts, that they're efficient investments for the city, and that was one of the main things that we recommended. You can see that out of the forty-four million, I mean, roughly seventy-five percent of that is basically set aside for capital improvements, and the rest is more or less how much our cash reserve is for a rainy day or for other things that are coming from the general fund. We also have something that has always been reserved for streets, a quarter of the sales taxes that the city collects goes to streets, and that balance has also been accumulating little by little over the years, right? So, we have another two million dollars in addition to the thirty-four million dollars that is set aside for streets. Infrastructure and equipment, which is what I was explaining earlier, those fixed assets, that is forty-nine million dollars now, and that includes the aggregate of all the street repairs that you all have done historically, right? So, it's a really big number, it gets bigger every year, reflects the investments that you're putting back in the community, and it's being depreciated over forty years or more. There were nineteen projects in progress at the end of two thousand and twenty-three, and the cost of those projects that were still in progress were six million dollars, right? And that's included with all the forty-nine million dollars that you're seeing there, and, you know, obviously, the total long-term debt would be forty-nine, so you can see there's a big correlation there between the infrastructure balance and the certificate of deposit balance, and that is kind of what we expect to see, most of the infrastructure is going to be financed with your long-term debt. If we go to the following page, that would be page twenty-two on the financial statements, this is the statement of activities, right? And the format there, if you're seeing it, it just looks a little different, that's the format for governments, we put expenses first and revenues at the end, which is kind of backwards if you're used to seeing financial statements, but the important thing for governments is what are the departments that are the most, the bigger ones, right? So, the biggest department would be Public Safety in first place, and second place, we have Community Development, which is what's in charge of most of the infrastructure projects, and then we have General Government, which is the administrative arm of the government, right? So, those three are your top departments, and we see year over year, there's, you know, a little bit of growth on the expenses, as we would expect to see. However, for the year, in the general fund, you guys were in line with your budget, which is another thing that's important to mention, is that you didn't spend more than what you had budgeted for in your general fund, and that's another remarkable thing about the city of Horizon, is that you're pretty good about monitoring your budgets, we never had any major budget differences when we look at our audit, that is, one of the first things that we look at, the audit process is how is those budget variances looking, and for this year, we also didn't see any significant budget variances, even though we did see increases in the expenses, right? The revenues, the total revenues were sixty million dollars, as you can see here in the slides, and that includes grants of two million dollars, right? Again, it's an unusually high amount of grants for you all, in fact, those grants include the tech startup grants, and they include the portion of ARPA that you've spent, so that's why you're seeing two seven million dollars there. Total expenses, fourteen million dollars, change in net position, two million dollars, so it means that you did have more revenues than what you spent, so that's what we hope to see year over year. The pension expense for the year, we do show it there because that is still relatively new, it is a little more than two hundred thousand dollars. Your pension liability is a little over fifty percent funded, and I believe it's only been about four or five years since you guys got your pensions, so you're well on track to continue to fund that. The capital outlay, that's how much you invested in roads, and that is not counted as an expense here in the audit, in this presentation, so you can see that a big portion of your earnings are going back to capital outlay to the roads, okay? Property tax revenue is the main source of revenue, that is approximately forty-one percent of your sources of income, the rate was fifty-two cents, and it was actually a little less than the rate from the previous year, so the rate has remained very, very stable, and even though with that rate that remained flat, the total collections of property taxes were about six percent more than last year, so, I mean, obviously, because of the change in property values and the growth of the city. Federal and state taxes, we talked about it, they're related to tech startup and ARPA, and then the second and important source of income would be the sales taxes, which is a quarter of your revenue, and roughly a five percent growth from prior year, and that usually reflects what's going on with the local economy, right? Because, obviously, that's coming up from businesses here in the city. The largest expense we talked about being the police department, the Community Development Fund, and then also interest expense, of course, because we have the new bonds, it now is a little bit bigger than what it used to be, however, it didn't exceed our budget, as we had mentioned, right? It's part of what we had appropriated for that interest expense. Depreciation expense is something that you're not used to seeing because it's not budgeted, but it is a non-cash expense, and that's just the non-cash write-off of those roads, right, as we're writing them off year over year over year, right? And that's something that gets recorded when the audit is completed. So, that's the summary, so we also have financial statements by the individual funds, there is a general fund, and there's a bunch of other little small funds, each of them has their purpose, there's information on the financial statements on pages twenty-three to twenty-seven, and the funds really is what you might be a little bit more familiar with because the budget is based on the funds. What we see here is a summary of the funds, the general fund is the most important one, that's the way to think about it, that's basically like the city's bank account, right? That's where the majority of the expenses come through. Assets in the general fund are six million, fund balance is five million, fund balance is what we have in reserves, after we take out how much we owe on our liabilities, and then we have some other funds that are significant. That special revenue fund, that is the ARPA fund, so we still have had four million dollars there at the end of the year, we have the Street Maintenance Fund, the Debt Service Fund, and then the other one that's really big, of course, is the Capital Improvement Funds, where we have the funds that are being set aside for construction, and that's how we can see out of the forty-four million dollars in cash, how it's broken down, it's broken down basically this way, into these different funds, and you can see whether each fund had income or loss, and the one that sticks out is the Capital Improvement with a twenty-four million dollar surplus, that is because we haven't used the bonds, and that's why it's showing a surplus, it's going to be reversed in the next years as we spend those funds. This is a five-year analysis, I also like to include this towards the end of the presentation so we can try to place the results in the framework in comparison to other years, and we can see the growth in property tax revenue and sales tax revenue year over year over year, so our sales tax revenue has grown every single year, and there was a big growth from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one, and then the growth continues a little more modest. Property tax revenue, you can see the relationship in total property tax revenue versus the property tax rate, and you can see that the property tax rate has actually come down from what it was in two thousand and twenty-one, but the collections continue to exceed year over year over year, right? So, that's what we want to see there, right? That helps substantiate the growth in the expenses for the city, the inflation expenses and the cost of living adjustments and all these kinds of things. Grant revenue does fluctuate a lot, and in the last four years, as you can see, there hadn't been that many grants until now that we're using our ARPA, and then we got the big tech startup project for Derrington Widening. Long-term debt, there's a big jump there in two thousand and twenty-three, obviously, that's our bond, and that correlates with total assets and total cash, okay? So, again, as I had mentioned earlier, we don't have anything negative to report, our audit opinion is a clean opinion, it sounds a little boring, but it's actually a pretty good result, it does take a lot of hard work from the Accounting Department and different members of management, especially in this current, lately, there's been a lot of technical changes to governmental accounting, however, I mean, the city continues to keep up with most of them. I think what we're going to see in the future is that a lot of small governments are going to start working with two accountants, right? Because it's getting too complicated to a point where you almost need an auditor and you almost need an accountant to help you get ready for the audit, and we're starting to see a lot of that in many, many small governments. City of Horizon, I mean, the accounting practices are one of the best that I've seen, I do work with many governments and other nonprofits, and for the most part, although the accounting policies here are in really good shape, very, you know, very professional, very well organized, so that's something that I want to point out, and even though that it's only the second year for Lily, I mean, I do think the audit process was very smooth, we have a lot of challenges with governmental accounting, there's leases, there's a really large report, there's pensions, however, there is a very high amount of involvement in reviewing those estimates with us, and it really helps the audit process, you know, work out a little better, and also able to get the financial statements done timely, I think is very important, and that continues to be the case. And finding people, making sure you're properly staffed, is another important thing, a lot of governments are struggling finding the appropriate staff for those positions, so that's another thing that you guys have been able to successfully do, and it's reflected on the audit being done on time and without any findings. So, those would be my few things, the other big recommendation, of course, is looking at your investment pools, you do have different financial institutions that you work with, each one is a little different, so you need to make sure that all of them are meeting the requirements for governments, so we did have a discussion with Lily about that, and she's going to reach out to some of those banks to make sure that they have you the appropriate products for governments, to making sure that the funds are fully capitalized, and also that you're getting a competitive interest. There is one bank account that the interest appears to be about one percent, so we made a comment on that, is like, well, maybe you can do a little bit better just based on what we've seen with other clients, so that was, it was not a finding, however, I think it's an area of opportunity there, given the climate here with interest rates. And other than that, that was basically it, does anybody have any questions?
I'd like to say thank you very much for all of the hard work, I know it's not easy, and, you know, looking at this slide right here, I mean, that there's no violations, no instances of fraud, I mean, this was my first year as mayor, and this is a great handshake. We love to see this, I'm super excited to see this, because this is awesome, but I just want to say thank you so much, we have a fantastic department here, and the people here work very hard, you know, they work very hard, and for our community, and, you know, thank you to everybody here that works here for the talent for Horizon. Are there any questions?
This is excellent. This is excellent for where we are, by the symbol.
Sorry for the, where's my?
It's for the state infrastructure bank, Carlo.
Right. Yeah, no, yeah, I mean, you want to be able to show that you're auditing, that you're not behind on your audits, also that you have resolvency, all these things, so, yeah, I mean, I see a lot of good signs when I work with you guys, and especially that you guys are really good with your budgets, that you're not overspending, there's a lot of governments out there that have gone many years without audits, and then there's others that they are getting audits, but there's a lot of findings, right? So, with you guys, you know, really getting a clean opinion, it's really no credit for us, I mean, we're just here to do the results. I mean, we're just here to do the result. It's really more uh counsel, really, to keep an eye on things. And then also, of course, the the accounting department, the finance department.
Any other public questions?
One comment I will make, a suggestion for uh what, six percent or eight year rule is amplified.
Uh, it's been a long time.
When we got the new computer system.
Yeah, yeah, so again, going back to the complexity with with governmental accounting. So about ten years ago, you were in a position where you needed a lot of help from your auditor to produce the financial statements. So what was going on is that you you had another software, they didn't have all the capabilities. And then, uh, a lot of the adjustments that need to be done at the end of the year, that they weren't done. So that was a finding, right? Uh, now we're getting to a point where we still have adjustments, but they're the standard adjustments that you would expect your auditor to provide you with, right? I mean, we have adjustments for leases, we have adjustments for depreciation. Uh, before it was, uh, let's figure out what's going on. And then we would adjust a lot of things and basically partake in your accounting, right? And then the the software was not sophisticated enough to be able to separate by funds like you all do. Uh, and over the years, and this is going back to when Pat was um finance director, all of that got cleaned up. Uh, to the point that you guys could even generate a lot of the the reports that we we still generate for you guys, right? And we kind of do it just because it's easier for us to do it. Uh, but you have enough capabilities to do your own management discussion and analysis, right? Which is a section in the audit that is supposed to be done by management, is done by the auditor, but you could do that internally with the tools that you have now. Uh, so that finding, um, it it changed over the years. It it went from being you need a lot of help, you're not doing your accounting correctly, to you need another system, to you just need help with these adjustments, to now you don't have any findings. Uh, so, I mean, it's it's it really is a testament of how much you've improved. And I know in the past, there were some years that you were behind in the audits, or you guys caught up on that, too, and you've never been late since then. Um, so I would say keep up the good work in that regard.
Are you using Tyler News?
No. Just one step.
Yeah, it's Tyler Tyler Technology. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate your trust again another year, and we look forward to the following year. Thank you.
Hey, onto item number fifteen. This is the discussion, uh, item early. Uh, this is the first reading of an ordinance adopting a zoning change within the municipal limits of the town of Horizon City, Texas. Rezoning two parcels from A-one apartments to C-one general commercial, containing approximately three point nine six eight six acres, uh, clean a parcel of land out of section thirty-one, block seventy-eight, township three, Texas and Pacific Railway Company surveys, and a portion of section thirty-one, block seventy-eight, uh, township three, Texas and Pacific Railways, uh, company surveys, town of Horizon City, of San Antonio, Texas, north of Horizon's uh Boulevard and west of Canazo Avenue, and authorizing the location of the change on the official zoning map of the town, providing for the following finding of that repealer severability and proper notice in hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Michelle Garcia, Planning Director. Um, I will try to keep this brief as it is a first reading. Uh, we are bringing it to council ahead of the public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission next week. There's a misunderstanding that the applicant did not post the required signage on the site for it was scheduled to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission last night. So we had to reschedule it. And in an effort to try to catch up, we've uh brought it forward for our first reading. So we don't have our recommendation yet from Planning and Zoning Commission, but we will have that ready uh for the second reading and public hearing. So again, this is a uh an application for a rezoning parcel from A-one apartments to C-one uh general commercial is located on Canazo Avenue. Um, there are some existing apartments to the south here, and then there's, I believe this is the elementary school. I think the, this just directly costs Canazo from uh Desert Hills Elementary. It is currently zoned C-one, I'm sorry, A-one apartments. These are pictures of the sites and such property, those first two top pictures, and then residential uh to the north, to the south, and then to the east of the school. I'm not sure it's to the west, because it's blocking it, but it's vacant to the south, immediately to the south. The uh future zoning map and the city's comprehensive plan does call out for this area to be parks and open space, but it's very unlikely that that will happen unless the developer sets to be very generous and builds a city park and dedicate it there. So, um, since that is very unlikely, we are, staff is supporting this request to to develop commercial uh property there. This is the conceptual site plan that was submitted with the application. And I believe they're they're looking to do retail and medical office use within these buildings. This is a survey of the properties. And that concludes my presentation. Again, this is scheduled to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission next Monday, uh, and we'll have it back in front of you all in June for the public hearing and second reading.
This is the discussion item. Motion is being issued unless you need.
Is that whole section all A-one now?
Yes.
From where the apartments are to the.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Yes, and for some reason, we show a road here, but nothing has been dedicated. So it's actually part of that entire area there. So it looks.
So.
They would, they change it all of it out?
Just that.
No, they only own those two parcels right now, so. Um, I I think they are probably actively pursuing the other parcels as well. So if they do, um, acquire them, they will likely come back with a similar request for this area. Yes, ma'am.
Multiple story or single?
I believe they're showing single story. I don't know if it's on this. But again, it's conceptual, so, yeah, we even have the layout here. Um, but I believe they're single story right now. But, uh, because it's conceptual, they can build to whatever standards are available to them through the C-one zone.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen, this is also a discussion. This is the first reading of an ordinance or ordinance number zero-two-nine-six, amendment number one. An ordinance, amendment, ordinance number zero-two-nine-six, the town of Horizon City, adopting the municipal budget for the two for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four fiscal year to allow for the transfer of funds in the two thousand twenty-three street maintenance surplus funds to the two thousand twenty-four street maintenance program. And for the uh and from the mass transit uh public service budget to the planning operating budget and providing for the following uh for providing for repealer and severability clauses.
Council, good evening. Terry Casada, CIP manager. Uh, this is the first amendment to your budget. And because your budget is adopted by ordinance, we have to bring the amendments as an ordinance as well. Uh, there are two components to the amendment. The first is with this restricted street maintenance fund. We are proposing to appropriate five hundred and nine thousand seven hundred dollars from the surplus into the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four um project so that we can award the contract. And as I mentioned to you, that we expect to bring that to you in June. So this will have a budget in place so that we can then encumber that contract. And the second part of the amendment transfers thirteen thousand dollars within the operating budget from public service to the planning operating budget. And uh, and subject to your questions, that is all we have as far as amendments.
Any other questions or comments for the council?
I just have one question.
Why aren't you?
Just one off the top of my head on a public test. Uh, the for the street maintenance, uh, the original budget already had a a a use of the surplus. Um, what, um, what what was the change? Was it the the program more than what you expected or what?
Yes, it it was, we had anticipated that it would be more than that amount, but we didn't have the final numbers. So now we're basing it on the the low base, the low bid uh that came in as well as construction management costs and testing costs. So it's a total project budget that that uh is going to be utilizing the surplus as well.
Yeah, one more.
I I know I saw what the transfers in the plan was for, but I don't remember exactly.
I'll defer to to Ms. Garcia.
So you may recall, we brought forward a request to um investigate expanding our extraterritorial jurisdiction and asking the city of El Paso to release some of their ETJ to us. And so this is to cover the uh cost of the survey for that area.
Come on, Jim. Any other questions? Any comments?
Thank you, Council.
Thank you so much, Congress. Uh, being that there are further items, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion adjourned.
This reading is adjourned. Thank you all so much. Appreciate your time. For those of you that stuck it up, no worries. Say, how are you?
Good.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Yeah, I missed out on.